At the time is 6:20 PM. I apologize for being late. That's my mistake 100%. Can we go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The purpose of tonight's meeting is a special meeting for the JED discussion. We have a couple of guests with us as usual, Mr. Lamb from Farmersville and Mr. Walsig from Germantown. And I'm not sure Mike Moyer is on as well from Jackson Township. So again, my apologies. I apologize for starting 20 minutes late. Brian, Nick, can you hear us?
Mr. Raymer, before we start, anything I need to take roll call?
Sure.
So, Mr. Raymer.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Okay, now we're official. Thank you.
Okay. Nick, Brian, you guys are ready. I sent you guys, I think after our last meeting, I just sent something I put together. And I know none of us have revisited or have had discussions since then. So I've even got to familiarize with myself with it. But the one thing I did want to cover tonight, last meeting when we left off, we had a lot of discussions on both the time period, we would run the JED, what that term would be potentially, and then as well as how we would split the revenues. I think where we left off was we were kind of at a standstill a little bit on the split of the revenues. And so I put a few scenarios into a spreadsheet. Definitely, it's just a draft. So anyone that's on the call tonight, anything we're reviewing is a draft. It's just a pro forma to see what the numbers could look like. Potentially, I think, you know, when we start talking these things in the meeting, it's difficult to envision what it really means when you say 1% versus 1.5% on the tax revenue side. And then also, when you're talking about a 25% to your jurisdiction versus 35 or whatever. So I just tried to lay out kind of some bookends of what the potential differences could be between these scenarios. So before I get into any of those scenarios, Brian, Nick, do you guys have that spreadsheet? Do you recall? I just looked back at my email in 1217. I think I sent it to you in just a spreadsheet form.
I'm looking at it right now, Tyler.
I've got it. I've got it here. I'm going to pull it up right now.
And Brian, I don't recall if this came from you or you guys have a copy of this from the last meeting, I think. I think Brian had shared something in the last meeting that had a table on there with some revenues. That was basically, basically the starting point of the analysis that I had done was the payroll estimate that you had broken down between the primary, intermediate, high school and the board, along with the current revenues and what the estimated JED revenues would be at 1.5%. So that was kind of the starting point. Again, anything you want to point out that might not be correct, or if you guys had a chance to look at this, I don't know if you've looked at it in a lot of detail. But the attempt that I did, and I've tried to lay it out relatively clearly, hopefully it is, is, you know, with all the wages that we have between the primary, intermediate and high school that would be in the JED in the future, those wages total up to nine and a half, nine and a half million dollars is the estimate there. And again, all this stuff is just estimates. So nine and a half million dollars of wages per year at a 1.5% rate, that would be somewhere in the $142,000, $140,000 range. I think it's 142.5 is what I show here on the spreadsheet. Again, at 1%, that's $95,000. There's about a $50,000 difference between a 1% annual rate and a 1.5% annual income tax rate. So that's what we're talking about splitting up in years six through 10. The construction revenue is the top section up there, which it shows for the total of the five years, the estimated percent of revenue would be 770,000 at a 1.5% rate, which I guess the first thing we'll revisit is we talked about a 10-year term. I think we're all still aligned to that. I'll give everyone an opportunity to make sure that there's no changes there, waffling there. The other thing I think we all kind of did agree on was a 1.5% for the construction revenue phase, which because that would be on, you know, mostly outside work that's coming into the district. So at a 1.5%, that's $770,000 over that five years is the estimate. So I'll pause there, see if you guys, if you're tracking along with me so far, everyone's still good with the 10-year term that we proposed? And if there's anything that we need to catch up from the last meeting before I go into the individual scenarios.
I'm good with 10. 10 years is reasonable, and I feel like that's, I'm fine with that, with the option to extend if necessary.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think the 10 years and the 1.5 at least for the construction. And then we're going to discuss the percentage thereafter, correct?
That's right. That's right.
I'm in agreement on 10 years.
I think we're good with 10 years. I do want to talk options tonight because whether that's five-year options or 10-year options and the number of options that we want to put on there, I think we're open to discussion, but I do want to try to nail some of that down tonight if we can.
Okay. And then the other thing to check on is everyone, and Mike, I had a video shot. Mike, are you there? We'll move on. Mike can chime in later. He might be stepped away, and that's probably my fault. Okay, okay.
No, I'm, I'm here. We're good with the 10-year.
Okay. The other piece, just to make sure we're all on the same page, is years one through five, which we all believe is the construction period, we would all be aligned. And I think we were okay with the 1.5% that first five years, and then we could switch it. And that's what we'll determine later tonight. But 1.5, is everyone aligned that 1.5% is the right percent to do the full maximum amount we can levy during those first five years? In the same order? Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep, yes.
Okay. So everyone's aligned here. So that takes us for the first five years, that's $770,000 of estimated revenue. And so on, on the four options you see below, I've got years one through five and then years six through 10 broken out separately because obviously, construction revenue is different than the going teacher salary piece. And, and they all total up to your 10-year split. So there's four different boxes there. The first year, the one through five, because it's a simple, we all agreed, 1.5%. Every one of those first one through five boxes all total up to $770,000. So hopefully, everyone's clear on where that comes from. Year six through 10, that's where the four different options vary based on what's the tax rate that we use and what's the split that we split between the four jurisdictions. So that's a different option. So let's look at option A. And Mike, I know you don't have this in front of you. I don't even know if there's a, there is a way. Do you want me to send this to you and share?
No, I already have it on my computer to be shared.
Okay. I'm going to have Haley share this. So Mike, you can follow along, and anybody else that's on the call will be able to follow along with this math.
Give me just a minute. While she's doing that, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So when I look at the spreadsheet that Mr. Walsig made a while ago, the first is the 2021, 2022, and it is the high school teacher salary revenue. Okay, yeah.
Okay, yep, 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 yep.
Do you have that, which shows $44,000 a year, included with years one through five here?
He shows it at the top.
Okay.
I think it's a $45,000.
Forty-five, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I used the other side, Abra. I actually, I didn't even pay attention to this side, to be honest with you. And I, I think it's Brian's shot, kind of doing the same thing I did. And so we'd have to reconcile that. Brian, you can walk me through if we can't, if we don't get to the same kind of numbers. But what I did, he had the $10 million of revenue here. And I just started with that base as my revenues and then calculated the tax revenue off of that. Okay, so hopefully you all, can you see what's on the screen being shared?
Yes, we can. And I, I had reviewed the numbers when you sent this to me originally. I think, you know, you rounded slightly. They're all estimates, but yeah, the numbers look good there.
Okay. So if you look at the top, just to catch everyone else up on the call that hasn't had a chance to see this, the top, top part of this spreadsheet, what it's doing is setting up what the total wages are in the JED, potential wages, again, everything's potential, but potential wages in the JED, years one through five during the construction phase. And the reason I have the 1% revenues lined out is because we all have tentatively aligned to use the 1.5%. And so at 1.5%, you see $770,000 as the revenue. Let me just scroll up to the very top if you can.
Oh.
There you go.
Sorry.
Okay. So you see $770,000. That's the potential tax revenue, 1.5% through the first five years. So that's the tax base that I'm using down in option A, B, C, and D at the bottom for years one through five. That's 770,000. So at the top, that you see where those numbers come from. Year six through 10, there's nine and a half million dollars of wages between all the workers at, within the JED district in year six through 10. And that nine and a half million dollars of wages could yield $140,000 of tax income at 1.5% or $95,000 of annual tax revenue at 1%. And then you see right below that, those lines, what the total of the five-year, six through 10 numbers would be. So it can either be $712,000 of revenue or $475,000 of revenue. So those are the assumptions that then feed into the options down below that we just kind of need to nail out the splits. So again, let's go back to option A. Option A, again, is years one through five at the 1.5%. Year six through 10 is at a 1% with an equal 25% per jurisdiction. So this is the one where all four of us would share equally and a 1% split. So it's the lower revenue, total revenue over that 10-year because we're dropping down to 1% for the second five years. And what this shows is everyone gets an even $311,000 split equally. Okay? So that's option one. I think we should then drop all the way down to option D to cover the other end of the spectrum because I think Germantown is the one that we're, we're most concerned about. Well, I shouldn't say most concerned about. That's the one where we've had the most discussion about how much revenues could change. Option D is that we stay at 1.5% all 10 years. And we use the preliminary splits that were preliminary discussed in the JED, which has the highest split for Germantown, which is 57%, and it shows $406,000. Now, the reason it didn't jump dramatically for Germantown, it's relatively similar, 311,000 versus 406, is because what we had discussed with this is that, you know, for the first five years, Germantown and the Village Farmersville will be flat on their revenue because the schools won't be moving out in years one through five. So what would always been kicked around is that Germantown could have all of the construction revenue do years one through five. And so that's why this doesn't change dramatically for Germantown. If we did option A versus option D, I understand there's still a difference, but when you break down $90,000, $80,000 over five years, you know, you're talking $15,000 to $20,000 a year. So it's a loss, but it's not overwhelming. And, and I just, I just wanted to lay this out to make sure we're all on the same page because I felt like it was a really hard chasm between using 1% or using 1.5% and splitting it 25% across the board versus splitting it the original way we had talked. And what I'm trying to line out here is I don't think we're as far apart on these options as, as we felt like we were at the end of last meeting. And so I've got some other things on there. As we talk, I won't go through the rest of the numbers right now. I don't think they're necessary. I think the point I'm trying to make is that I think we're closer than we all were giving ourselves credit for during the last meeting. Hopefully, this encouragement that we can, we can get there and that all of this is, could be relatively unimpactful and we just need to come to an agreement and get this thing moving forward. So I'll pause there and if anybody else has any general comments, and then we'll figure out where to go from here.
I would simply suggest that, like you said, I appreciate you laying this out. It's always better when everybody can see the actual numbers we're talking about. But I would say, to start the conversation tonight, I would go back to, since we all agree on 10, if you don't mind, I would start with the, the options, the extensions, and then we can get into, and then we can get into those splits. But I agree with you. I think we're a lot closer than we all thought.
Yeah, I agree there. I think, I think let's jump into the, the options and let's jump into the rate and then let's jump into the split and call tonight early instead of three hours tonight. Let's do this.
Yeah, I've already put us behind. So why don't you guys go ahead? Because I mean, I'm not sure if you guys have strong opinion. I, I don't know what you guys are proposing or what, Brian, you're proposing on that. I, I thought, the way I walked away from the last meeting was that we would have potentially options on the end and, and we would just define if that was, you know, either 10-year options, but they would be in perpetuity. Is that not what we would think that would happen?
I see. So you're thinking it would be, we could, we could extend it five years in unlimited number of times is what you're thinking?
Well, I, I thought the way that, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, was it Brenda? I thought Brenda had said that it would be up to the board members on the JED. If we wanted to put optionality to the contract, the JED board members, the five of them would be voting at the end as this came to a wind down, whatever it is, a year before it winded down, whether they wanted to prolong it. And then it'd be up to the contract whether that was a five-year prolong or 10-year. But then at the end of each one of those terms, they would have the opportunity to vote on, on that piece.
I think you, you can only make a JED up to 99 years. So.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fair. No, I'm just, no, I, if we did like a 10-year extension, not to exceed, yeah, yeah, 99 years. Every 10 years, not to exceed 99 years.
Yeah.
I, I don't see why that would be an issue going forward. And then, again, five years would be kind of short if we're going to be going over this. I, I think I would be more in favor of a 10-year extension. And it can go on up to, I mean, have the option to continue every 10 years up to that 99th year, I guess.
And who knows what that looks like in words in 90 years, you know? Or is it still going to be 99 years, 90 years from now? So I'm sure Brenda could answer that, you know, does it need to say until the 99th year? Or how does that, you know, if that's what we all decide that it voted on in 10-year increment thereafter? Is that all it needs to say? Or does it need to say until?
I mean, for more side, it sounds like all three of us are okay with them being 10-year voted upon terms. So I, I, Brian, I would assume that that's what you would be pushing for, right? Is something like that?
Yeah, no. So, so my, my goal was to at least get this out so that we could try to use this JED for at least 30 years. Now, I totally understand the need for off-ramps and the need, if, if for whatever reason this isn't working, we don't have to renew an option, I guess. It sounds like we're all on the same page. If we want to make it sort of an unlimited option period, I'm okay with that as well, up to 99 years. But I guess then we'll need to get into some of the language, and this probably is another Brenda question. And I think we told her last meeting that she didn't need to call in because we wouldn't have any for her. But are these, are these options, is it essentially a automatic renewal unless the board says, no, we want an off-ramp? Or is it a majority vote to continue? Or is it a unanimous vote to continue? I think that's another key factor here because, you know, one jurisdiction, for whatever reason, may decide they want to kill the JED just to kill the JED, and it dies, even though the other three of us were in favor of continuing it. So I, I just think we need to work through those details. But it sounds like as far as the length of the potential JED, we are in agreement.
Yeah, and I, I think it wouldn't matter unless it had to be unanimous, as you say. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be, you know, a plurality, whether they continue it or, or stop it. So I don't, I think that's a formality. It's just if it's unanimous, we might have to be a little bit more particular if its intention is to keep it going, you know, other, unless there's a unanimous stop. I think that would be the only way this would really come into play. So we'll probably have to carry that one to Brenda, but I think that's a good point. But I mean, Brian, Mike, are you guys okay with 10-year extension terms to, to be voted on? And we can determine the fine language on whether it's unanimous or whatever with Brenda's help?
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
I am too. I just have one comment and one question. One, I wonder if we'll be all driving flying cars by 2120 in 99 years. That'll actually happen. And then two, the comment, it's, sorry, just 99 years seems so long. But the comment is, you know, Brian mentioned the off-ramp. I think we'd be doing the JED board a favor if we made it an off-ramp instead of having to get together and vote to renew it every year or every five years, 10 years, whatever it is. I, I don't have a strong opinion on whether it's five years or 10 years or one year or whatever. As long as the board does have the option to get out of it if something changed because we all know that things change in five years, let alone 99 years. So.
Okay. So.
I agree with that.
Brian or Nick, if you guys have any other ones, I mean, I think we're good with the 10-year initial term, 10-year renewal terms. Everyone's good with that. Let's, Mr. Heesin kind of note that, that we're all aligned there. Down to tax rate unless, is there another one we need to cover tonight? Tax rate split, is there another one?
Not that I could think of.
No, those are the big ones. There may be some initiative stuff. In Brenda's last email, you know, she listed a couple of documents and surveys, economic development plan, which our economic development director has drafted. But, you know, it's, it's paperwork at that point. I think once we get the guts here down, we'll be good.
Okay. I think these two go hand in hand, so I don't know if there's really a way to tackle them separately. So I guess, if you, Brian, you kind of looked at them preliminarily. And I guess I would probably open it up to you to let you give me feedback on what your thoughts are. Or, you know, you said you were going to carry back some stuff to the council and get their, their feedback. You've seen these numbers. I guess, give me your perspective or what, you know, if you have a really hard line.
Right. So, so obviously, the concern is whatever we set this rate at, it's very likely to never change. One, because part of that JED board will be representative likely from the teachers' union and a school official. So our push is we strongly feel 1.5% is the way to go continuously throughout. I think we've got to look at the greater good this drives to all of our constituents instead of just that small portion, as I pointed out last time. You know, there is a difference of a half percent or more just by living in Myhamsburg and working here. So you're not going to be able to make it fair and square for everybody. But at least it's 1.5%. We know it's locked in there. Of course, if we have too much and we don't know what to do with it, we can lower it, right? But there is a very, very low chance that this will ever increase. So, so I guess in terms of rate, that was our, that was our main push there. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that.
Someone's speaking, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, or we can jump down to split, but go ahead.
But just quickly, I would just say, I don't, I don't know if there would be really, to your point, a lot of reason to justify an increase on the JED specifically. I think if the townships were, or Germantown was falling short, I think you're right that it'd be tough to justify increasing the JED versus doing something else for your jurisdiction. So you're probably right. I, I don't know. You want to talk split?
Can I jump in and say, I think the 1.5, personally, I think if we're starting at 1.5, we can, people are way more comfortable with you dropping taxes on them than trying to raise it. So you, you know, if the JED board, like you said, has way too much money and they don't know what to do with it, I think that they'd be okay dropping it. So I think 1.5 is the way to go personally.
We've also talked, I mean, these, these construction estimates, and Tyler, I don't remember what you used. Did you use 400 or 500 in your, in your split here for construction?
$500,000.
You used 500.
Thirty-three, yeah, was what was provided for the revenues.
So, so that could be high, although we just got the email yesterday, I think, that it looks like there may be even more construction out there than we expected. So, you know, maybe 500 is, is in the ballpark now. But again, raising it to 1.5 would at least cover us if, if there was a shortfall there. As far as split here, I've messed with your spreadsheet a little bit to plug in some of my numbers here. Hang on one second here. So this sort of came about, you know, at the, at the end of our meeting last month, we had a little bit of a discussion about how to split this. And I think it was actually Mr. Stubbs that brought up, you know, could we do something like a, like a 70, 30, 60, 40, 80, 20, you know, some kind of split just among Germantown, Germantown Township and Farmersville-Jackson Township. So taking that, I have come up with basically a 70, 30 split. That's Germantown-Germantown Township, 70%, Farmersville-Jackson Township, 30%. If you look at enrollment, population, you know, amount contributed to property taxes, income tax, whatever, it's, it's, it's all roughly along those same lines, which is how I think is a good way to justify it. Now, if we do that, then of course, Germantown-Germantown Township, we got to work out what our split would be. I think we can make this work. I may have to do some convincing back to our council, but I think we can make this work, just in an even split. So it'd be a 35, 35. Then, of course, Farmersville-Jackson, you got to figure out what your split's going to be. Then we go from there. Now, I guess I'll pause there and, and gather your guys' feedback on that. And, and the calculation I did was for 1.5% for this, that I think we can make this work.
Do you know, Mr. Walsig, I assume you probably have these numbers right in front of you. Money-wise, what would that break down per year for the township if it was 35? Do you know that? I mean, I can do it on a calculator.
$50,000 almost exactly.
Thank you.
So just, just so everyone else on the call is on the same page, we're talking about you're proposing year six through 10 and potentially beyond 1.5% rate, right?
Right.
And that rate brings in that $712,000 to be split. But what you're saying is a 35, 35 and potentially 15, 15 for the other two. The 35% splits would be worth $250,000 over that five years, which is $50,000 a year. The 15% would be, whoa, about $105,000 in total. So that's 22 a year, I guess, somewhere around there, 22,000 a year. So you're talking $50,000 per year for Germantown and Germantown Township and 15-ish, well, no, 20, I'm sorry, 20 a year. 21, 22 a year.
21, 375.
There you go. Perfect numbers. 22K.
I didn't plug in a split for Farmersville-Jackson. I didn't know.
I just worked it out on even split, just see what the numbers would be.
Okay. I don't know if Farmersville, if that works for you guys or, you know, it kind of gives us the flexibility to go if you wanted 2010 or whatever you need.
At the, at the 1.5% rate, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mike Moyer, do you have any opinion or thought on that?
I, I agree with Nick on that.
Yeah, and if it requires some additional conversation between us and Jackson Township, we, we're used to joint meetings. We can make that happen.
So I guess for us to have the paper in front of us, I mean, the one that we had kind of talked a little bit and pushed for, I think to some degree was with option A, is what we had talked initially. And for, for us, that would be 311,000 on years one through 10. If, if we did this, it would be 192, 500 for the first five years that's up there in option A, plus a 250,000. And so obviously, it works out to be more than what we're talking about. I, I think there's pros and cons.
I still prefer the 1% after five years. Less impact on the people that are going to be affected. I know, as Brian said, we're not going to make it fair and square for everyone, but the less of an impact we can make on those people, the better. The splits, I mean, the, my, my whole argument from the beginning was it needs to be fair. And what you've just offered is a whole lot more fair than where we started off. So I think. Um, I think it's definitely workable, but I, I still prefer, you know, along the lines of what Tyler presented with option. A, I guess on the spreadsheet where we reduce the income tax down to 1% for the uh life. The longest portion of the life of this Jed.
So my question is, so if we would reduce it to a 1%, and Mr. Liam, excuse me if I'm speaking for you, because I know that his comment was. If at the one and a half percent, that split would be okay with him, but at the 1%, that would not work, work out, right? It would be less?
Yeah, it would be less at that, at that 70, 30 split. Now, there might be an option where we could work out, you know, not a 50, 50 split with Jackson Township, but I, I can't speak for them, I don't know that Mike can speak for all of them right now either, but. That, that would be the way to, to kind of make that work.
Okay, so Mr. Stubbs, I'm gonna throw this out there and be a real pain for my people that know math in here, so I apologize. Since you would like a 1% and I think 1.5, I think just leaving it even would be the easiest, can we do a 1.25?
I guess a great o- option.
I mean, that way we're meeting in the middle, there, I, I mean, 1.5, I, I mean, I teach in Myhamsburg, I live in Germantown, I pay. Myhamsburg is really high taxes, I think the majority of people working do that, but I mean, that way it would be a. Better option if that's what we can agree on to get this all rolling, I think we need to.
Yeah, the, as a way to keep this moving, I'm, I'm fine with the 1.25.
So just so everyone, I mean, my, my guess to Brian's point is that these numbers, let's just call them high, just. Just to say that they're high, because I don't want us all to sit here and look back in, in five years and say, well, I didn't get every single penny of that, so maybe they're a little bit high, but they're all degrees. And so if you look at option A versus option D, one's 1.2 million dollars for the 10 years, one's 1.5 million dollars. It's really not even that much of a difference, it's like $200,000, if you put a 1.25, I mean, you're, you're basically. Within $100,000 across everyone over the 10 years, I mean, we're really getting to splitting hairs here. I, I feel like 1.25 is a compromise that we can all get behind and, and. Yeah, it might cost some people 5,000 bucks a year, but that's what we're talking about is 5,000 dollars a year. We all get behind, you know, one and a half for the first five years, 1.25 for the last five years, and then a 35, 35, 15, 15 as a preliminary.
I, I think we can make 1.25 work. If. With the 35, 35, yeah. I, I, I can probably sell that.
You can make it work or you cannot, I didn't, I didn't quite understand.
I think I can make it work here.
Okay, I, I didn't hear you, my bad.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm in thought, I, I think we can make the 1.25 work. At 35%.
For my number people, what would that monetary breakdown be?
It would be 41,500 for Germantown and Germantown Township at one and a quarter year six through 10.
Thank you.
And it would be 17,800 for Ger- or for uh Jackson Township and Farmersville. And to answer your question, yes, I, yes, Farmersville can get behind that.
Okay, Mike, I know we're throwing around a lot of numbers, are you able to follow with us here? So, we'll, we'll, we'll check back with Mike in just a second, I guess, I think everyone is preliminary aligned except for, for Mike. I don't know if there's other questions, but I, is this at the stage where we would say, okay, and we all kind of have a straw dog of what it would look like, we need to go back to our. Our councils, villages, whatever, and, and uh get some approval, or I don't know how this worked last time, you guys will have to help me out, how, how the draft. That we had before me, okay?
Ever got that far?
Tyler? Tyler, can I jump in? Mike Moyer said his, has having internet issues, but they are good with the one and a quarter as we just discussed.
Perfect. So, I, I mean, I think the, the key terms, first, congratulations to everybody, I think it's fantastic that we were able to get this far, I mean. Really appreciate it and everyone's obviously given um in their areas, but it, it's good, I think we got the key terms preliminarily agreed, I. I, I think at this point, we probably do need to bring Brenda back in, I think. We try to jot down maybe the top three or four questions along with what we think the next steps are, and maybe we send her an email after this and see what we need to do. Uh, along with setting up another meeting for next time when we can meet and have the answers by then, but one is kind of give her terms. And, and see uh if she has any concerns about them. I, I hate to go backwards, but another thing I'm thinking of now is, is still contribution, we had talked about that, so we might have to factor in something, whether it's monetary or whatever. What our contributions are going to be, so we still have contribution to figure out.
So Br- Brian and Nick, we talked in March or April of this past year about splitting the uh, uh lawyer fees. Equally as our contribution, as each entity's contribution, is everyone still comfortable with that? At the time, it was around 1,500, I believe we were expecting each entity to have to, to pay.
And is that still a correct number? You know, she's been at some of these meetings that have been kind of lengthy.
I can check on what the fee was, I think we authorized up to 5,000 for her. So she shouldn't be over that, um, now depending on how much time is left and how much he's billed, I don't know, we'll, we'll look into that, but. Yeah, we had authorized up to 5,000, and she thought she could do it for that.
Just one clarification question, would our um contribution um for paying those legal fees be based on. Um, whatever split we decide?
It should be.
Okay, and one comment, Tyler, uh, just before we get into drawing anything up. Um, you mentioned at the last meeting, it was a good point, um, why should any, uh, we just need to spell out. I think why any entity should get more than another. Um, you know, Farmersville Council and I have talked about that, and. You know, I think um if you put together a 70, 30 split and to prevent people from scratching heads down the road. Um, I think it really should be, we should write in there uh that it's based on service, services provided. Germantown, of course, is providing fire, you're, of course, providing the main police force, so. Uh, I think it should be written out in the contract as to why we made that split decision.
Yeah, I, I agree, Nick, and I think that makes a lot of sense, um, so, yeah, 100% aligned on that. Okay, I'm, I'm trying to take notes so we can, you know, what to do next time or, or what we need to do between now and next time, I guess. The things I have is, is contribution, we need to determine, I mean, that, that, the lawyer fees is one, but was that sufficient?
Yeah, that's enough to cover the whole.
It is.
Yes, yeah, because you do not have to have an ongoing contribution.
Okay.
So one-time contribution to the Jed is sufficient for everything.
Okay.
So that satisfies, and that's why we discussed it back a year or so, a year ago, um, was that satisfied everybody's contribution to the Jed?
Okay. I, I hate to. Hate to just throw this out, because I don't want to start a, a long drawn out, definitely, conversation, but just initially, do we all feel. There's no obligation or need or anything to set aside a certain portion of those collected funds to contribute back for. Uh, any kind of physical improvements within the Jed or something, you know, or, and, and. I'm saying this knowing that people think I'm the school guy, so I, I don't want to be pushing anything, I'm definitely not doing that, I'm just saying from the purpose of. If we're collecting, you know, a million dollars over a 10-year period, do we think it's reasonable or, or logical or something we want to do to. Give any kind of contribution to that Jed to do any kind of improvement that might benefit the, the townships and jurisdictions, you know?
So a certain portion has to go to the Jed Board, and that's not been discussed.
Right, I think, didn't Brenda say it was around 2%? Is, is by law automatically set aside, and it can, it, it's really used to pay for the. You know, if the Jed needs to have insurance or, or whatever she listed. Now, she thought 2% probably would be way more than the Jed Board would ever need because they're not going to be doing anything, and um. I guess annually, that whatever balance is left can be distributed based on the split formula, or the Jed Board could decide. Um, you know, to go buy something for the school or whatever, but there is a percentage set aside there and there should be.
So Brian, you're gonna have to repeat yourself in just a second, our, we lost our audio.
It's alright.
Well, I think we're back.
Alright.
Sorry, I tried to sit down, but I'm not sure you could hear me either.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, I should have stopped talking.
You're okay, I don't, we couldn't hear you.
Uh, I think Brenda said 2% has to be set aside annually upfront for attorney fees or just operation of the Jed. She didn't think our Jed in particular would ever use the 2%. So she said at the end, typically annually, the Jed would refund that amount based on the splits to the entities. Now, if the Jed Board had a balance there and decided, let's not split it because this new school needs. You know, whatever, there's something they can contribute to help with the new building or, or whatever the need is, they, the Jed Board could vote to use that money to. To spend on something that the school would need. And I think it was 2%, but don't quote me on that.
Makes sense. So we're all comfortable with that, I'm, I'm completely fine with it?
Yeah, yes, I'm good with that.
Okay. Um, okay, so we think we might have contribution. We, we got a question to Brenda that we're gonna have to send to her about how the renewal needs to be set up. Brian, are, are you the one that wants to send this to Brenda since you've been in contact with her?
I, yeah, I can, I can send it to her, that's fine.
I think the key there is the nuance that you pointed out is, we want these to be, you know, uh, voted on at the end of the 10-year term. But does it have to be, you know, the, the unanimous, and if so, then we might, I guess, ask her the option, we can set it up where it's. Due to continue unless it's, you know, a vote at the end of 10 years, you know, terminates it or whatever, but I guess just come back to this on that. Um, and then I, I guess along with that, we're gonna have to ask her the question of what are the right next steps, like, are we, I assume we need to go back to. Whoever we're representing and make sure we're all aligned at the next uh, public, we have each and, and make sure it's okay, and then. I, I mean, there's still going to be, even at, even at that, there's still going to be another point in time, I believe, where once this thing is drafted, where we have to take it in front of the public, right? For them to have a chance, so I, I don't know that that's like a super formality, because that's going to have to come in the future anyways, but. We'll have a meeting and, and you'll have an opportunity to ask her questions, so we'll take it back to our people, but then ask her the question of what are the next steps and how do we start to get this thing drafted to get, get a move on it?
Right, so she sent us after. Maybe the last meeting, at the very bottom of her email, she listed just in general terms, the additional items needed. Um, she has length of Jed, renewal periods, income tax rate, split, contributions, I think we've nailed those down for the most part. Uh, map with zoning noted, parcel numbers and legal description of the property to be included in the Jed. Uh, Jed contract, they will prepare, so she's going to work that, a draft has been prepared, that's the one you all have. Once we give her whatever these splits are, uh, everything that we just talked about, she'll update it and send out a new version. Economic development plan for the Jed, including new expanded services to be provided by the parties, improvements we constructed. Development a schedule for collection of the income tax. She said she will assist with this, but the bulk of it will be from the income tax code for either Farmersville or Germantown. Um, petitions for the school board as the property owner and as the business owner. She has prepared a draft of these and will finalize for delivery to the school once the terms of the contract have been agreed to and drafted. And then finally, a notice of a public hearing, which she will prepare.
Okay, um, I don't, I don't think you covered this in there, but we had talked a little bit about who's going to administer it. Um, is that something that we need to carry back to talk before next time?
I don't know that we need to lay that out in the agreement, that's a good question, um. But yeah, we, we do need to resolve that, and I think I owe you all a. Quote from CCA, I think I said I would go out and get a estimate for what they thought their fee would be, just so we have it. It doesn't matter to me either way if Farmersville does it, or. Um, I, I know we, we wouldn't do it in-house because we collect everybody's via CCA, so. Um, if we were going to do it, it would be CCA, now Brenda did clarify, Farmersville can collect. While operating the Jed under our tax code, since we'll be at one and a half percent. She said that was not an issue, so we just need to resolve who we want to do the collections.
Can we, can we operate under a new tax code, one, one and a quarter?
It can't be higher, it can't be higher than.
I think that's why she said it couldn't be higher.
Yeah. Yep.
I have feeling. Be higher than the highest from Germantown, right? So Farmersville should be able to do it, I, if it's possible, I would rather see Farmersville do it, keep the money local, pay somebody local to do it. And that money stays here instead of in Cleveland, although good Browns, so. Sorry, I had to throw that in there, but uh, i- if, if Nick's comfortable with it, I would rather see the money stay here. The fee that needs to be collected is paid to someone in Farmersville, uh, so. I mean, that's, that's kind of your, your place, though.
Our council seemed very interested in that option, uh, we would probably just need to get some more details before we say uh hard yes. But I think, um, like I said, the, the consent was, let's do it.
Ever you?
I just had a question for Mr. Liam, and I know Mr. Moyer's on here, I'm not sure if he's able to hear, but. Um, or respond, so Jackson, Jackson Township and Farmersville dot split, that, that money, um, Mr. Walsick brought up, is that something that you need to go back? And have a joint discussion on between Jackson Township and Farmersville to try to hash that out before we would come back to our next meeting? You know, to make sure that that split's going to work for both of your groups, your entities? About 17,800?
Yeah, I already have the green light, we're good, um, the question I have though is. Do we wait and do a vote? All of our municipalities, do we wait and vote after the public hearing and after everything's done?
Yeah, you have to have the public hearing first.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah, and then after that, I think it's two public hearings, is that correct? Or a public hearing and then a vote, I think that's to be two.
I think it was announcement 30 days, public hearing 30 days.
That might have been what it was, so, um, yeah, we have to have that public meeting before we officially vote on it, but you can go back, we can all go back to our boards. And discuss it, give preliminary approval and then prior to uh, prior to the public hearing.
Sure.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I think we're to the point, we've discussed having, previously having a joint public hearing of for. All four entities, I don't know if that's something that is doable, you know, we, when we talked about that, it was pre-COVID. Um, having it, I mean, I know from our prosecutor's standpoint, as long as we are all in person. We're, and the public has the availability to log on, that is something that we can do, I'm not sure if there's any space that would be big enough. To meet the code that is right now, so I love that something that we're so interested in doing is having it all together, do it or separate or different. Group.
That might be a question for Brenda to see what more.
We had talked at one point about using um even the high school gym, this was pre-COVID, obviously, but. I want to say Brenda may have recommended that, that. At least then you've got, you can, you can have her there, you can have the school there, you can have everybody there that can answer any questions that come up and. All four entities can vote, now, I don't know if we can do that, given today's circumstances, but um, I guess we'll see. But the gym may at least allow us to, to split up. I don't know if we can do that, given today's circumstances, but I guess we'll see, but the gym may at least allow us to split up enough to make it work.
That was my recollection when we, when I met with Brenda and a few of you in March or April-ish too, so. I don't know, is that something that we would like to do, is, I mean, if that's Brenda's recommendation, is that we all four meet together, or Mr. Raymer and Mr. Stubbs, are you comfortable with that, or?
I mean, it's a whole lot of public meetings to call together at once, if we can make it work out legally. I don't have, I don't have an issue with us all meeting together, but that's a whole lot of people, four public meetings, and four roll calls and four everything, so. However, it's most coherent for the people, the people that are gonna be watching.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, what I would say is, I'm trying to think through like how it'd actually play out, and I know that there is some, maybe not well-founded or well-thought-out opposition. And I feel like there's a couple of benefits of doing it jointly, just because not only do you have everyone there that's thought about it, but you also, if you have somebody from Farmersville that's vehemently against this. They can hear a Germantown or Jackson Township perspective.
Okay.
That, that kind of gives a little bit of a balance, because the last thing I want is us all to go get separated and then everyone go back, because we, it's, how long for us as the leaders to get on the same page with this? The last thing I want is you guys to go back and us to go back and get railroaded from our community without having a balance, let's think about the entire community, let's think about what's best for everyone here. And I think that's the joint piece that I like to, but again, to Jake's point, we'll do whatever Brenda says, number one, but two, whatever is reasonable, if we can't get it worked out, we can't get it worked out, but I think that's a huge benefit if we could.
I agree, I think just because we did it this way, all four together, I think we should do a public hearing the same way, all four communities together.
And Mr. Wosick, I don't recall if, I know the school's not benefiting from the JED, right, they're not getting revenue, so is the high school someplace that we can use? Maybe that's a question that Brenda needs to answer as well.
Yeah, I don't see why not, I think we probably could. I don't know, I'm afraid that's probably the only place big enough.
They're on our land. Sorry, bad, bad JED joke.
I, Valley was not allowing outside events in, so I don't know if that might be an issue, or if they've changed their policy with COVID. When the water district stuff was going on, we had the gym full, who's on one side. So we've used, we've used the high school gym before as a setup. It would be, we would have to speak loudly, because we set up a couple of microphones then, and that was, I think, maxing out what the school could do, and that was for four of us at a table. So when there's twenty of us, we're just gonna have to speak loud and, and make it work, but again, Valley may not let us do it based on their own. Policy, I know I had trouble scheduling our football banquet for the, for the junior high because of COVID, so. Well, that's gonna have to be checked with the school.
Do you want me to reach out with Mr., do you want me to reach out to Mr. Richards and find out if, if he'll host us? And I'll just let him know, the earliest it would be is late February, I guess, at this point. After a thirty-day announcement, or after, thirty days after the announcement. It may be even later than that. I mean, more than likely, more than likely, but earliest I would see it happen is then. One thought is, Ever, I think you said your prosecutor requires the three of you to be together, is that right?
I believe that if we're going to be voting on something, he would like us all to be present or all in the same format.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know what Jackson requirements are, I know we can do it virtually, so one option may be. We, we have them together, but we're not necessarily in the same location, you know, we do one of these, basically.
That would be awful.
You're just standing up there and you're gonna be on the computer with Mr. Wosick, thank you.
No, I'm just saying, a meeting with twenty people, over twenty people participating on Zoom, plus audience participation. Would be awful, it would be hard to follow along, it would, I, I would rather do it in person than to, where on the football field or at Kircher Park. Then, then do it online, try to do that online and get everybody. Call-ins not muted and someone's dog in the back, I mean, there's so many things that would be problematic for that.
We'll figure this out, we'll, I'll add that to my questions for Brenda, see if she's got a recommendation, I mean, it may just not work out, you know, because the, each of the townships, you get, you've got to have all three there, and. You know, just getting six people to all agree to time thirty days in advance is pretty difficult, so.
Are we thinking is the high school the biggest venue, is there anywhere else that I'm missing that is, you know, if they come back and say we prefer not, somewhere else that has a good town system?
Then you're gonna be looking at the bigger churches.
Not there with.
So either, the two on the, on the, on the Pike, you know, the First Church of God or the Methodist across the street, those would be the next options, I would say. Just for size, I feel like there's a, a pretty big following for this, and I think. With the, with the number of board members plus the number of audience, we'll be pushing, could be a couple hundred people, if anything like the water district. Was, I, not opposition, but I mean, people just interested in what's going on.
Well, I just talked to Mr. Richards, he said that we could probably use the high school gym, but there needs to be, obviously needs to be a discussion ahead of time for that. And then I've also used the basement of the United Methodist Church. Pretty good size, and they have a pretty good system in there for all of the online stuff, so.
So let's start with the high school first, hopefully that, that'll just be able to work, we can go from there. But I, I think we're getting to.
Yeah, I think Brian was kind of, you were running down the list of stuff you had from Brenda, was there anything else on there?
Nothing significant, like I said, the economic development plan's been drafted. Let me see here. Petitions for the school board, she's gonna draft. The zoning map may be an issue, I don't know if you guys can weigh in on where that process is, weren't they trying to combine parcels or something?
Can you give us an update on that, Haley or do you?
So the parcels have not been combined yet, I'm not sure specifically where they are in that process, I know that. The Board of Education does not own the property legally yet, so that's still in the. Changing phase there, so they're not combined, it's still three separate parcels.
So I don't know that they need to be combined, but. As long as it doesn't change.
We were talking about, when you guys were talking about potentially not including the high school parcel right now on the JED, that would be the only reason that they could not be combined.
And I think we all agreed to.
Yeah, and then if they're not combined, when this goes into effect, we would, you guys would just have to list every parcel number. That's the only thing.
So I don't think that's an issue at this point either.
Yeah, I mean, Brenda.
List all three parcels.
Let's point Brenda to Haley or, you know, whatever it needs to take there, to, if Brenda says I need to know what the parcel numbers are, and so Haley's the contact that we can get this information through, keep it moving. So I, I guess the key things are really getting with Brenda relatively quick, Brian, to find out, you know, to answer some of these questions, but the biggest thing is, can she go ahead and draft it up? And then what needs to happen as far as, do we need to have a preliminary review, like each one of us read it and make sure we're all okay with it before it goes to the public, or what needs to happen, so. I guess at this point, you know, you can tell her, great news, we got some aligned things, but now we need a lot of coaching on what to go from here.
Yep, I'll send her these questions tonight, and maybe we can set up a meeting with her here in the next. I don't know what your guys' schedule is like, sometime this month still, maybe, just to have her maybe walk everybody through next step, maybe share the draft with us. Go from there.
Let's talk that, the other thing I would say to note to Brenda, I think, is really the point that Nick made too, that we want included in that, the reasons for the disproportionate split. I shouldn't even really call them disproportionate, proportionate splits based on services provided, is kind of how I would describe that, so. Let's make sure that gets included, she drafts that, but yeah, I, I know it's tough, we've had five meetings in the last ten days, I think. Without joking, but I, I'm fine to have another one this month, if we all can come to a time on the calendar and Brenda can get those answers, so. I guess that's what's next, is trying to come up with a calendar date.
Well, two weeks from today, I might be pushing it, but, I mean, we could go do that, that's a Wednesday, I don't know if Wednesday works better for. Everyone, that's January twenty-seventh, exactly two weeks from today, that might be pushing it for Brenda to get this all in, I don't know, you know, how long it would take her. I mean, it's either exactly fourteen days or sixteen days if we want to stay in the month of January, so.
I'll reach out to her, I'll see how long she needs, and then, and then I'll let everybody know.
The only day that I have unavailable is next Tuesday.
So can, can we, is everyone okay with the twenty-seventh as a first option, let's put a second one, if she needs four weeks, we can come up with a second option just in case.
I'm good on the twenty-seventh.
We're not ma, planning on making major changes, I have a township event that day I have to be at, so I'm not sure I can.
The twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh. But if we're not making any major changes, I'm fine, I have to be in, over that, at the meeting over there. For that, but.
Yeah, no, I, hopefully it's just to touch base and keep this thing moving, right, I, I don't think we're gonna revisit any big things.
And if we have a draft ahead of time, Mr. Wosick, would you send that out, you know, Brenda get that done early, that would give Mr. Stubbs a chance to read over, and then if you had any questions or something, maybe you could.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, as long as there's no major changes, I, I don't, if you don't, if you guys are comfortable with me not being there, I don't think I'll be done. At that time to be here, so.
I, I wouldn't be shocked if what we had on the twenty-seventh was Brenda coming and asking us clarifying questions to make sure she could write this thing up, I don't see her necessarily having a full draft by then, but. I'm assuming she would get to a point where she could just ask us all the questions, so she can go away and, and put this thing together and get back to us, that's why I don't want to wait too long before we revisit.
I'm available on Skyward. If that's the case, Tyler, and you're probably right, just clarifying questions, she probably doesn't need as much time, should we just pick a date that works for all, especially if it's clarifying questions, probably better if we're all there.
No, I agree, that's what we're asking, is everyone okay on the twenty-seventh?
I thought, Jake, are you good with the twenty-seventh?
If, I, I will, probably won't be able to be there.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying you can only be like short for your time.
No, I, okay, my thing's early. So I don't know if it'll be over in time or not.
No, that's fine.
There's no end in time.
Okay.
The twenty-sixth?
You have a Tuesday, okay? I'm fine with that. Tuesday to twenty-sixth?
Works for me.
Did he say he can't do?
Twenty-sixth is good for us. Twenty-sixth works for me.
I'm available on the twenty-sixth.
Alright.
Six o'clock or seven?
Don't forget, it's six o'clock, okay? You'll be here at six. Do you have anything else we need to cover tonight, I feel like we've actually made progress.
So I'm gonna run through this one more time, this is my list of questions, this is in to Brenda. So renewal options, how do we set it up, whether it's automatic renewal or automatic kill? Standby, let's see, tax collection, just clarify that Farmersville can implement our code. And then really, it's more of an internal, you know, Farmersville or CCA, who we want to go with. Let's see, public hearing, what is her preference, or what is, if she has one, or what is her recommendation as far as combined or separate? Parcels, just clarify with her that it's okay that the parcels are not in their final state, again, they're not gonna change, but. Just to make sure of that. And then, just in general, how long she needs to update, prepare the group, or prepare the draft for the group. I'll invite her to the meeting on the twenty-sixth at six, make sure that works for her, and then I'll mention the three things we agreed to tonight, plus. Including the proportional split based on services provided.
My only thing that I would add to that, just to clarify a hundred percent, is that it's okay that the tax rate of one point two five is okay, since it is neither Farmersville or Germantown.
It just has to be less than that.
That's what I thought, I just thought it would be good if we had that. We're here, just to clarify since she's gonna be coming anyways.
Yeah. Anything else anyone can think of?
The percentage to go to the JED board.
That's good, yep.
Yeah, I mean, she asked what the contributions, we plan for it to be legal fees, she'll tell us if we can, so I don't think we have to pose it ahead of time, so. That's the only thing I had, Brian.
And, and the cost, what, what we've been charged thus far, I'll get that, and, and what she thinks the cost is to, to wrap this up, just so we've all got it.
Yeah, I, I think she, she had outlined a few things in that email I sent her one time about some insurance and some other things, so I guess just reiterating what those costs are, just so we can talk about them, I mean. I think, again, everyone's okay with doing those, the split of whatever they are, they were relatively small fees, but it's an annual fee.
Okay.
Alright, I appreciate everyone joining, any other business before we close here? Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at seven twenty-six, good night, everyone.
Nice meeting.